I'd like to call a meeting to order and announce that, as I have sent in in writing, that due to time conditions and constraints in my professional life, I no longer have the time to devote as Chair of the Select Board. So I have hereby, as of 7 o'clock, 50 seconds left, to resign my position as Chair, but we will entertain motions for a new Chair.
Well, I guess the first thing would be moved to accept the resignation.
I moved it.
And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I accept my own?
No.
Okay. Okay, now I'm no longer Chair, I've moved to nominate Michael Phelan as Chair.
My second.
I'll take it.
All right. All right. Stay there, I didn't want to.
Here you go with this.
Mike noted was coming.
Oh, here's Mike. Thank you.
All right. Then we're gonna go on with the agenda. And I guess we're talking to Chief Silverhill, continuing a topic. And just to refresh, we asked for some numbers.
Yes, um, we asked for several, including the overtime, cost of overtime, I mean, I think they have a list, it was like four or five different places.
Oh, all right, David promised.
Last year, overtime was 34,848. The year before that, it was 31,000. The cost for a new officer on a base pay is 48,730. Added to that, the cost of an average expectation of overtime per officer, which would be just under $5,000, comes up to about 53,708 for the minimum cost of an officer, if you anticipate that average of overtime.
And what did the two part-time officers' costs is?
Well, that's one of the flaws in thinking that we'll be able to address that problem and fund full-time officers simply with the part-time officers, or by eliminating the part-time officers on the regular shifts that we put them in, and that that's gonna cover the entire cost.
No, I don't think it's gonna, I thought it wasn't gonna cover the entire cost, but it would certainly cover some of the cost.
The minimum cost is 14,000, because there's typically two eight-hour shifts on the weekends where the part-time officers can cover.
14,000 per officer?
No, for the two shifts for the year, at the part-time officer's rate.
That's, that's.
The difference between a part-time officer's rate, if a part-time officer were working an entire position of a full-time officer, it would be 36,811, where, as I said, the base pay for the full-time officer would be 48,730. So there's a difference of 11,919 between, an hourly wage difference between a part-time and a full-time.
We haven't replaced the two part-timers.
I'm sorry?
We haven't replaced those two part-timers.
No, no, we've got one guy who's in the Reserve Interment Academy now, and we're actively looking for some other replacements.
Well, the question becomes, at least in my mind, is whether or not we can make up some or get some of the money from not using part-time officers by hiring a full-time officer.
See, the part-time officers are also used for replacement costs for the full-time officers. When full-time officers take vacation, or a sick day, personal day, then, you know, I make every effort to fill those shifts with part-time officers instead of paying full-time officers overtime. So even as we go forward in looking into this, the, you know, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be practical to think that we could run the department with an elimination of part-time officers. We still need to maintain a part-time officer staff. One of the points that I made last week was that, you know, it's becoming increasingly difficult to retain part-time people with demands that are on that part-time position. As we talked about, these people have full-time jobs, they have families, they have a lot of obligations.
But if we add a new full-time officer, can we save something on the overtime account? Can we save something on the part-time officer's account? Or is this just gonna be an additional expense?
No, at a minimum, we would be able to save that 14,000 by, because then full-time officers would be working those two weekend shifts that we're currently staffing with part-time officers.
But in your estimation, a full-time officer costs 48 plus, he's gonna work a minimum of $5,000 overtime?
Well, that's just the average, based upon that there's seven full-time officers and, you know, we spent $34,000 overtime, divided by seven, so the average comes out to, you know, 4,900, just under $5,000. So, you know, that may fluctuate with the individual.
Right.
You know, some officers end up with more court time or investigations. That's one of the most difficult things, is predicting or estimating overtime costs because there's so many fluctuations. There's no way that I can know how many calls we're gonna have in a year, how many of those calls are gonna turn into arrests, and how many of those arrests are gonna require additional investigation time, which would be overtime, and then how much of those arrests are gonna end up going to court, and then causing court time. It's just a complete unknown that you, it's impossible to put your finger on it. So when I work on the budget, I look at the overtime costs, you know, typically I'm working on the budget in December, and January, February, in those months, and I look at the last three years, I look at the overtime costs from three years ago, and two years ago, and last year, and then take how much we've spent in overtime during the current fiscal year, double that, and then take an average of all of that to try to come up with some type of, you know, gauge on what overtime is costing us over the past few years, you know? And typically it goes up, but that's really the best educated estimate that you could do on forecasting overtime costs. And in any given year, that can fluctuate, you know?
Are you saying you have a lot of extreme, some officers will have a lot of overtime, much more experienced than others?
Well, some officers will have more overtime than others.
Right, so then the cost of more, so why don't we take the median instead of the mean, you know, just work that half above, half below, then you won't have to worry about, you can, you know, smooth out those extreme, extreme overtime costs.
Well, and that's why, you know, I averaged that estimation, just under $5,000, based upon the total amount, divided by seven full-time officers.
Right, which is your average, but try, try to the median, just split it in half.
And it's quite likely that would be less in the first years of a new officer than an experienced officer, it's, again, it's difficult to say, you know?
You mean, just taking your numbers, an officer is gonna cost us an additional $40,000 out of the budget?
And bear in mind also that, in the first year of that new officer, they're gonna spend six months of that year, almost, at the academy.
We're gonna pay him, but we're not gonna get much from him.
That's right, we're not gonna get anything from him, you know? So in that respect, you know, that officer isn't gonna be in a position to become involved in investigations and court and overtime and all that for half a year anyways.
The officers are getting a stipend for EMTs, right?
Yes.
There's only two people.
There's only two.
Yes, there's about to be a third one.
Where does that, where do we pay the stipend from?
I was wondering if we could get it from the ambulance.
The ambulance fund.
That's been talked about in the past, but it's, you know, it's never been.
Where's it come from?
Right out of the police budget.
And how much do those stipends cost us? Chief, why don't you come on and take a seat?
We're trying to figure out how to get another officer.
How much do the stipends cost us?
The two officers are costing us $6,000 a year in stipend. So that could be approximately $9,000 with a third officer.
Chief Hyde, we're talking about, we've had some reductions in the police force, and we're looking to try and figure a way to stop, instead of staffing with our finger in the dam with part-timers, to hire a full-timer. And whether, under their union contract, they get a stipend for EMT service, and the question becomes trying to find enough money to put another officer on, whether we could take money from the ambulance fund for the EMTs, since they're first responders and frequently first on the scene, whether or not we could take money from that ambulance fund to fund these people who technically assist your department.
What kind of money are we talking about?
$9,000.
And I think in the past, we had a conversation, Ed Beck, that showed that he talked to me about that, and there, as EMTs, they're really, you know, they can't, working without the ambulance equipment, they're not really doing much more than the first responders, but in the event that we need another person to staff our ambulance, I think they mentioned once before, Southhampton used to do that, they had one firefighter and one police officer who was an EMT, and that's how they ran their ambulance, but I'm not looking for that, but in some situations, very rarely, we might need a second EMT on one of our ambulances, and if one of his officers could be relieved to go to the hospital to complete that crew, I think that the ambulance fund could be used to do that. I mean, if they're supplementing the ambulance, that's what they could do, and again, it's not gonna happen very often.
No, we're looking for more than, we're looking for $10,000 from the ambulance.
That has happened in the past, where an officer has gone and assisted you guys.
Well, he's assisted us, but he hasn't left his job.
Yeah, it has.
Well, he hasn't left his cruiser in the ambulance.
Actually, he has.
Wow.
That has happened.
Chief Hyde, the bottom line is, if we can supplement the EMS services in town, by taking some funds from the ambulance to support another full-time police officer, that's the bottom line, and we need, I think, what Mike said, about $10,000 to deal that, and that would help EMS services do well.
Well, my justification, all right, to say that that would be okay, to take the money out of the ambulance fund, would be that, in the event that I don't have two certified EMTs, that the police officer would be able to lock up his cruiser and get on the ambulance and complete the crew.
So you're willing to give us 20,000 out of the ambulance fund, then?
20,000? No, I thought you said 10,000.
That was 20.
20's right now, with everything else, that'd be fine.
But it seems like it would work, though.
Yeah, I'd say right now, the $10,000, I don't see as a problem with that agreement in there, I think that it's a, it's a good situation for the town.
So now we gotta find 30.
So Chief Silverhill, in the larger picture of things, too, has, what will be the impediments to any sort of regionalization of any of the services that we could do, combining some aspects of fire, realize that some towns physically, fire and police are combined in a safety complex, and then dispatch costs may get reduced, and/or combined with other towns? What are the impediments to do with that?
To?
To regionalize dispatch?
Well, you know, that's something we discussed in the past, if we regionalize dispatch, some of the problems that will come up is that you're not gonna have somebody manning the station, because officers will go out on patrol and lock the door behind them when they go out the door. When that happens, you don't man a police department, you lose your computers to the state, to be able to run warrant checks, enter stolen properties, those computers have to be manned constantly, if, so long as you have warrants and stolen items, and cars, guns, what have you, in the system. So it would also mean that we would be bringing somebody in to man that window, to take walk-in complaints, to take emergencies that come through the door, which, you know, we get people pulling in with the domestic going on in the car, people coming in with, you know, chest pains, different things like that have happened. So the town has an expectation that when they come to the police department, somebody's gonna be there. If you regionalize dispatch, there's not gonna be anybody there, or no guarantee that someone's gonna be there. Along with that, when we have someone in the cell, while the officers are booking right now, dispatchers watch that prisoner, if the prisoner's suicidal, then we have to provide a suicide watch, the dispatchers are capable of doing that.
Can you do that by remote camera, though? Somebody could be miles away looking at a camera.
No, the state requires 15-minute visual checks, which the dispatchers perform, they physically walk by the cell window and look at the prisoner, to make sure they're still breathing, make sure that they haven't done anything. We have cameras in the cells, but it doesn't, it covers most of the cell, but it doesn't cover the toilet area, for obvious reasons, you know? So, you know, there are blind spots in the cells. But there are many services that the dispatch center provides that are emergency and non-emergency related.
Did you sell those services out to others, or West Hampton? I don't think we, something.
I don't believe it's, West Hampton doesn't have anymore.
Right.
You know?
I drive by that highway garage sometimes, there on West Street, wherever it is, and that's unmanned.
So you're questioning what?
Can you sell services out there? Can you?
Oh, sell?
Sell, so then you're the center, and you regionalize for other people, other towns.
Um, I don't know, you know, they could reach out to West Hampton, see if they have something they're interested in.
Yeah, we have Hilltown.
I don't know that they, that they are, but, you know.
I'm just saying, it's a fundamental concept, at least in the business world, as you know, I come from, Walmart is big because it's regionalized everything, it's gotten to a point where they tell their suppliers how much they're gonna pay them, and that's, that's the extreme, of course, but in general, the flow in the corporate world is you get bigger because you get more efficient and cheaper per unit cost or whatever. In your case, if it's a.
The difficulty, though, just in that comparison, is you're talking in the corporate world to municipal public safety, and they're two different elements.
Well, so they're both a use of scarce resources, no matter what, how you slice it and dice it, they both are efficient use of scarce resources, and that goes all the way back to Adam Smith in British.
Well, I disagree with you on that, in that Walmart doesn't provide emergency services to the citizens of South Hampton.
No, that's the quality of the service, nonetheless, you're using a limited amount of money to provide a service that has constraints on it based on the amount of money you have, there's no difference.
I guess we'll agree to disagree.
There's nothing to disagree with.
You know, other regionalized, there must be other police departments regionalized for suicide risk, what do they do, I mean, there must be ways to still have those tasks taken care of, do they not, I mean?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know specifically what other departments do, you know, there's a Northampton Dispatch Control, and some of the small departments that don't have 24-hour policing use that Northampton Dispatch for their services. In the past, when we discussed this before I talked to some of the chiefs that had those, that service, not all of them were entirely satisfied with the knowledge that the dispatchers had of the communities that they're covering, they don't know the streets, they don't know the people, and it was the feeling from some of those chiefs that they weren't necessarily getting a personal service of concern and care for the officers out on the call. In other words, you know, here you have dispatchers that know who the officers are, and their sole responsibility, when their dispatch and officer are on the calls, to know what that officer's doing, to check on his safety, and when you have a regional dispatch center that's covering, you know, 20, 30 towns, you're not gonna get that type of personal attention to make sure that our officers are safe when they're on the domestic. They've also had problems with, due to the lack of knowledge of the town where calls have been misdispatched, and they've given erroneous information. So this comes with a lot of risk to go regionalized.
I mean, regionalization is something we should maybe consider, but it's not gonna solve our problem tonight, or make a decision as to whether we put an officer on.
Now, Mike, where'd you come up with the 30,000?
Well, I just took, David said 53,708 is the total for the anticipated cost for an officer. We'd eliminate the two part-timers for 14,000, so I got down to 13,970, rounded it to 40, and if, and then if we could get 9,000 or 10,000, or the, to cover the EMS stipends, we're at 30.
Mike, a realistic base figure for a new full-time officer is probably gonna be closer to the 48,000 mark, based upon, it's unlikely that an officer's gonna really get involved in overtime.
Yeah, but I'm saying, at some point in time, if we put them on, we're either gonna face the later round, we're gonna face the cost, laying them off, or paying them.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely, we have to look at it in subsequent budgets.
Right, and I'm not looking, it would be easy to do it tonight for one year, but that's not what we're, what we're trying to do.
Right.
Sustainable, if it's not sustainable, so the fact of the matter is, you're looking at finding $30,000, $30,000 from someplace in the budget to pay for an officer.
We, I had spoken about this before, about an override, just for a specific item, line item, like a new drone, because you can fund it for a year, but the following year, you're gonna have the same trouble keeping that officer here. William Massey was a DARE officer, and his neck was on the line all the time because the funding for DARE was not there, and it was very difficult for William to stay here, you know, and go into the Cape, to get a job, because he couldn't make the plans, and can't buy a house, that type of deal.
Well, you're not gonna do an override, if you're, if David's talking about an officer in the next short period of time, you're not gonna do that with an override either.
Well, I'm just saying, in the general sense.
Right, no.
But I mean, if you're getting down to $30,000, then perhaps an override of $30,000 might be something that's more palatable.
Well, or is there some, is there $30,000 somewhere in that budget that we can come up with? And then the first question is, are we likely to put an officer on now? First question, are we, I guess the first question is, how do we get Chief Hyde's $10,000 across the paper to the police department to pay the EMS stipends from here on in?
I don't know how to do that.
I don't either, but that's the question.
Because you're going from, well, the ambulance fund is for wages, though.
It's for, it's for ambulance-related services, which is where we can, I think we can rationalize the EMS services.
Could we, could we change the officer status into like, a special status that's joint-funded from the ambulance fund and from the town, that's, under the direction of Chief Silverhill, but it's a special status?
I suppose if somebody came in with higher qualifications on the EMS side, let's say we came in, what's the high level on paramedic? If someone came.
They're not gonna get a paramedic.
I'm just saying, but if you.
Well, even if we did, we don't honor paramedic levels.
No, no, but I'm saying you could justify paying, I'm saying you could maybe justify paying some of the salary from, from the ambulance fund. But at this point in time, the immediate need is an officer, I assume sooner rather than later.
Chief, you said six months would be the first that the person could actually be out there after training?
Well, there's six months, by state law, police officers are required to attend the Full-Time Police Academy within one year of their appointment. So the Regional Police Academy only runs a class when they have enough candidates, which are typically a minimum 44 people. So that's not to say that if we were hired, to hire a guy tomorrow hypothetically, that that officer would be attending the academy next week, it might not be for three months, could be five months before they have the next academy class. In the interim, the officer would be able to work, but he just wouldn't have the benefit of having that full-time academy training.
Are there people out there that already have that training, who are on the market?
Sometimes, sometimes there are, you know?
That might be also a way to go, if you get somebody with training, pre-training.
That would be the easier way for us to go, find somebody who's been through the academy, ready to.
Right, and when we, you know, if this materializes, when we advertise the position publicly, you know, we may get some candidates that are, you know, full-time academy trained.
Can you say, can your advertisement prefer, I mean, you can say the qualifications, and then all the time, advertising for jobs do prefer.
Well, probably a better way to where there would be, you know, a plus, rather than preferred, because preferred may discourage some, you know, otherwise very qualified, you know, insofar as their personal fortitude, you know, qualified people.
Plus.
Yeah.
Getting back to funding, then, how do we fund this position next year?
Well, you can fund it right now with your free cash.
But how do we fund it next year?
Well, you gotta find, that's what I'm saying, you gotta find 30 or 40,000 a year. We now have 10 coming over from the fire department, from the ambulance fund, so somebody should probably make a motion that we do that, that we, that we pay the police stipends from the ambulance fund, or reimburse the police department.
Well, we could do that as a potential, if you wanna, if you wanna approve, that's fine.
I think you're gonna start building towards a police officer.
Okay, then I'd make the six months.
So these are specifically for the stipends of the EMT, too?
Anybody, what are we paying for? We pay stipends to EMS?
Uh, EMT.
EMT.
And right now, with the two officers, it's $6,000, there's another officer who will be taking the EMT final exam within a month or so, so then that would add a third officer.
So that'd be?
Free.
Three times six is eight.
No, three times.
Nine.
Nine, total of nine.
$9,000.
I think that's, we're talking about concepts of, that the recent services in general, divided by the police department, that helps EMS.
Right.
And so that, therefore, that $10,000 we can move here, not for a specific officer, but in an officer's position or wage line.
Right, to reimburse for EMT cert, certified officer.
That makes sense, yeah.
Because frequently, the police officers are the first ones on the scene anyway.
Yes.
And they may not, they may not go with the ambulance, but under the new understanding, barring a police emergency, they will, in fact, if Chief Hyde needs them, go in his direction, and there may be, we may need to refine that for the officers, since, so that Chief Hyde is aware of their qualifications and their trainings and that sort of thing.
Well, and they would have to, we'd have to have copies of their EMT license and all those certifications on our file, and again, I would say that the way that we normally transfer money, it's at town meeting, and I would support, in part of my budget, where we would transfer the amount of $10,000 to support the EMT stipend for the police department.
Great.
And that would go through like that as a regular budget, but the taxpayers have to approve that, if that happens.
Right.
All right, so that gets us then to.
Well, that may be an article that you might be able to add for consideration tonight for the upcoming.
I would think if we're gonna put the officer on, we should, if we're, if the intent here is to put the officer on, then we ought to get that article onto this town meeting warrant, so that we.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Is there a split?
Our second, Dan.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I guess the, the motion then is to put an article on the town meeting warrant for that transfer, right?
Are we still able to put warrants?
We have to find that, so.
But the question is, how do you, you know, kind of the budget, I need to know specifically how it's, how much will they say?
Well, we're gonna take it from the ambulance fund and put a transfer to the police wages.
Okay.
And we let them, to reimburse.
So basically, just add money, right now, I add on the revenue side, the money, we're gonna put the 40, so I'm gonna add another 10 to that, and then put it on, and put it in police money wages.
The only thing I'm concerned about is we froze, the wage, we froze the line, right, from last year? So those monies, those monies won't go anywhere else.
Well, they're not gonna go, they're not, and it may end up as free cash next year, if he doesn't, if we don't put an officer on and it doesn't get spent, then there should be, theoretically, there should be $10,000 left. Now, what do we, what's, what's the board's pleasure as far as an officer goes?
I'm still sort of wary of using free cash to fund the position, I think.
Well, I think you're funding it for this year, the only place you can take it from. If you're putting an officer on, you don't have any money, extra money in your wage, in your line, wage line, so the only place we can put any, an officer on is, I think, unless somebody, correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm just, we talked about this before, on the budget side, we give out monies, knowing we don't really have funds or sources.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you gotta, you gotta think that you can find at least 30 to 40,000 in the budget next year.
Plus the.
Couldn't you go for an override, which would go year after year after year? Because if I was a police officer, or wanted to be one, I wouldn't want to come to South Hampton because we could only fund them for one year. Now, what's gonna happen at the end of that year? That person's gonna be in limbo again, but if he, if you knew you were funded for X amount per year more than we have now, that person would almost be guaranteed a job.
And then the question becomes, do you wanna hold off until you do an override and see if it passes, or do you wanna put an officer on now through the use of free cash and do an override at a later date?
Well, Mike, one of the things I am hopeful is that this year, when everybody sits down and says, looking at the budgets, and as you know, I've brought up this concern that I've had about the local appropriation to the local school, given the amount of money they have in school choice, maybe that is something that we can look at when we're building the budgets, to, you know, make a greater local appropriation to cover this.
And, and the school department has agreed to, even in principle, at this point in time, to, for $18,000, as I remember the number, but I don't think.
We should, we should look at all of our avenues, especially like, page you go, so if you want an officer, you buy an officer.
Well, I think what I, what I'm looking at is if, I think, when you're all said and done, you're looking at a number now of around 30 to 40,000 dollars, we, we know the school department is hopefully gonna come up with about 18, so we're looking at 20, can we get, find $20,000 somewhere else in our budget of 20 million, or 12 million to, to fund that officer?
What's the free cash number?
176.
It's dwindling very quickly, isn't it?
Well, it isn't, we haven't started dwindling, but it is gonna dwindling.
Are we, are we generating articles for the annual to get?
Annual?
Yeah.
Special?
I know, but I'm just saying for the annual, if we're thinking of, I mean, I'm still concerned about funding an officer in December of 2010 and not having the money next year for this officer.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong, the only place we can take it right now is free cash.
Right, no, I'm just saying.
Reduce another budget on that.
Unless you do reduce another, though.
I'm just saying, thinking ahead, what we're gonna do for the annual, how we're gonna handle paying for this officer next year.
Well, we're gonna, there's gonna be an extra officer and he's gonna, David's gonna come in next year with another officer in his budget wage line, and we'll be pairing and slicing and dicing to move money around to make it work.
We have to remember that, because we froze the wage line this year.
Well, we froze the salaries, that was our way of freezing salaries.
Right.
Not so much, we didn't freeze the wage line, it was our way of freezing the salaries.
I tend to support Michael's idea that free cash is the source, it's the only.
Well, if you're doing it now.
Up or down, right.
If you, if you truly think we're gonna put an officer on, the only way you can do it right now, from now until annual town meeting, is through free cash.
Correct.
And ten thousand dollars that's coming over from the fire department.
So how much would it, thirty?
Well, we'll, we'll transfer.
Twenty out of free cash, here's the free cash.
Out of free cash, well, we don't want to be doing it six months, we'd be budgeting six months, correct, David? Right?
Right.
So by the time you advertise and get him hired, you'll have six months left on your budget, so the thirty becomes fifteen, so.
Does this include health insurance too, that base wage?
Does not.
Then it's not on that line.
No, that was just salary.
That's another forty, five hundred?
That's another line.
What's the total package for, including benefits for control?
I don't know what the, what the benefits, you say it's forty-five hundred approximately in benefits?
For six months, so it's roughly eight to nine thousand, excuse me, per individual.
For a family, or for an individual or a family?
Families, like, fourteen, isn't it?
I don't think that's implied, plus ones, I don't think it's individual, I think that might be.
Two people?
You should talk more like sixty.
Yeah, when you're adding benefits.
Sixty-two ish or sixty-something.
Yeah, sixty-two-ish.
But for right now, we don't want to transfer, we transfer, well, should we transfer?
So we need thirty-two now, or thirty-one.
Well, if you're just basing it on a half a year, then you're really, if with overtime, which, as we talked, probably isn't gonna be a significant factor in the first six months anyways, but even at fifty-three, so what are you talking, twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-six and a half, twenty-six and a half thousand dollars?
Call it, round numbers, twenty-five, transfer twenty-five from free cash to the.
If we're just talking the remainder of the year.
Right, transfer twenty-five from the free cash to the police wage line.
Is that a motion?
No, maybe that's a, that's not a motion for me, but if someone wanted.
Twenty-five plus a ten, or we could give five from the ambulance now.
We're gonna, we're gonna take the ten from the ambulance, because that's reimbursing the other.
yearly costs.
It's not remunerated.
So you just need the twenty-one or twenty?
Twenty-five, call it twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
I think we may be a little short, but twenty-five should be able to make it.
I'd like to make that a motion.
To take twenty-five from free cash to fund another officer for the balance of this year.
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chiefs.
Now, let me, can I ask just a clarification on the line? Do you want these to appear as warrant articles so that they can be voted on, or, because what I normally would do is just change the budget, and then I give a budget that shows previous vote and the new amounts, so it's not, doesn't really, you know, break out all this information, it basically just devises the budget.
I guess we could revise it.
You could do, you know, a sheet that goes on a living explanation if you want, or we could do it as a warrant article, but.
The warrant article probably makes it clearer to the public.
Put it all in one warrant article, so you're not getting ten, but not the twenty-five.
I think the ten's gotta be a separate warrant article.
It is, you can have two different funding sources in one article, if, but as David said, then if the article passes, the whole thing passes, if it fails, the whole thing fails.
Right, but the ten, the ten.
You want that.
The ten is to, is for other things besides this new officer, that really has nothing to do with the new officer, it's just back-dooring in to enable us to do the officer.
So it should be two separate.
Two separate articles. I think that's a good spirit of cooperation.
Okay.
Thank you, chiefs.
Thank you.
I skipped over schedule, the appointments, are there any appointments?
It just, oh, that was at town.
That was it? Okay. We have approval of minutes, and we have an old one, March second, which somehow got missed along the way.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March two, two thousand and ten.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Payroll warrant?
Payroll warrant, number P eleven dash twenty-two, for a total amount of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixteen cents.
Make a motion to approve second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a bill warrant.
Zero, zero. No, no bill warrant this week?
Let's check and signature.
Just payroll this week.
We only pay bills once a year.
Yes. Town administrators report.
Paying numbers.
While we're moving.
You have to sign this.
Upcoming events, November thirtieth, December fourteenth, and December thirtieth meetings.
Just to remind you that on December fourteenth, in addition to the special, we are going to have a regular stipends meeting afterwards. When I say regular, it won't be a full-length meeting, but we do have some business to take care of.
And that's, are we gonna do that before or after the?
I believe we're gonna do it after, well, we had, you know, we, David had asked at one point, not to schedule things before seven, because of.
Well, and it's difficult for everybody, well, for some of us. I, it'll be at the conclusion of the.
Right, and, and I think it would be better if we could come back here too, just so, you know, have all the papers here, because we have an executive session with David.
On that one, we have an executive session?
Yes.
Action list?
Thanks to you, I got, I got something, I think, I'll finish my, I'm sorry. It's a, we started on negotiations with Chief Hyde.
Yeah, we gotta get that.
We never ended up on them, and I think we really ought to do respect to the chief, we've gotta get going on this.
What's?
Terrible times, but we've got it, we've got to address it, and that's it.
Diana, what's, November thirtieth, what's on that agenda?
Um, we have a full agenda for the thirtieth, we have the cable contract, and there's another matter, there's two matters that's sitting right at the top of the table, so that's a full contract. We could do it on the December twenty-eighth meeting.
I don't have it December twenty-eighth, I have December thirtieth.
I think that comes, yeah, it should be, it should be the twenty-eighth, not the thirtieth.
Refresh my memory on, on that, did we start a contract with you, with the chief or not? Have we done nothing?
I have submitted some of my proposals.
Your proposal?
Interested in the contract.
So why don't we recirculate those around?
Chief, I'd like to apologize in behalf of everybody here, we're just up to here with things to do, and it's not out of disrespect.
And I understand that, honestly.
And I, and I really hate to push it to the twenty-eighth, there's no way we can do it sooner.
Um, well.
At least have a brief discussion, maybe fifteen minutes of talk?
We probably could do it on the thirtieth, it's just that the chief would have to wait, I mean, he's, there's been times when we've gone until like nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, and he's had to wait, so, but if he's willing to do that, I just don't know, again, we have town council coming to talk about the contract for charter.
The paperwork that I originally submitted kinda gives you an idea where I'm at, what I was looking for.
So why don't we look at that and then on the thirtieth?
Do you want to schedule a briefing, since you're already gonna be in executive session, oh, that's on the thirtieth, that's the fourteenth, and to review the materials that he provided, and then have, schedule another one for him?
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think you can get the materials out to us, and then we'll meet with him for fifteen minutes, maybe a half hour one night, and then go on, see where both parties are, and go from there.
So we could probably do that on the thirtieth or the fourteenth, we can figure it out.
December fourth, in all that direction. Anything else on the action list?
Nothing.
How about the action list for the new town hall? What's going on?
Well, Doug might know more, I haven't, still haven't heard in terms of a date, last I heard from Rich, is that the, they were still, they're waiting for the phone wire to be grounded, so the elevator could be tested, and that, that could take up to three weeks to get them, it's gonna stay inspected here.
I did happen to talk to Gary today, and he said that's the only thing that's missing, is an elevator inspection. And once that's accomplished, they're, they're done. So.
I have a question, do we have a plan? We do have a plan, sir?
I do, I have, I have some information that I wanted to talk in terms of the warrant.
Did you get bids and that sort of thing for the moving?
Yes.
So we can't discuss the numbers, however, we did discuss.
Yes, we did get three quotes, so we have a given number now for budget that we'd like to put forth to you. The quote that we, I think it's about forty-seven hundred, and we did, I did research it, and Ed was correct on the valid wage, because it's associated with building, building construction, we have to use prevailing wage, so we went back to the bidders and got the revised prices.
It's still, it stayed under five thousand?
Stayed under five thousand, so forty-seven hundred. And we also have to consider the council on aging, which we neglected to do when we were thinking of moving, but I did talk to Betsy and got a list of their items, and it's probably like one van, they only have a couple filing cabinets and a couple tables, so.
Where's the rest of their stuff, they got put in storage?
It's stored somewhere.
The cargo box in the back of the tire station.
Well, we should probably make arrangements to have that unloaded while the movers are here and get it in.
There is an arrangement with, Gary was telling me about, there is an arrangement with several high school students, take them out, clean them up as a social private credit and answer regional, they were fairly new, they're packed away, in good shape.
Is there anything in there that's, that's too big for those guy, high school students to move or anything?
Have you seen Ed Bauchett as younger son yet, these days?
No.
So in terms of that, so, so about five thousand for the move, and then I have two other items.
Well, can we pick a date to make the move?
Well, I need to get, I need to have Rich tell me when he feels a date certain for the CEO, because then I have to contact Verizon Charter and the Secretary of State to get things hooked up, but all of those people need a date, you know, date basically, so, I mean, we can set one in advance, but if something, you know.
Well, I'm thinking, we're not gonna, are you gonna, you thinking you move before the end of the year now?
Yeah, I haven't heard from Rich, I, I've been kind of keeping in touch with him, if the, if the elevator is gonna take three weeks, and we know that that's a certain, I mean, schedule for six, I mean, six weeks is really what we need to notify Secretary of State.
So why don't we pick a date, like January fifteenth, whatever day that may be, because you're, it's gonna be up to when those movers can come too, they must.
Correct, yeah, we need to give all the people like the actual dates, and we have to set, I mean, I guess we thought, the staff and I thought that we could do, maybe close Wednesday, Thursday, do Wednesday, Thursday, perhaps Friday if they're willing to, but we, we're gonna need a couple days to basically just be shut down and go over.
Well, and the other problem comes is if we hit, if we pick January fifteenth, for instance, or sometime mid-January, you could have a heck of a storm.
That's sure.
That throws a monkey wrench into the whole thing now.
We just have to have a storm there.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but part of the, but part of the plan has gotta be an alternative.
Sure, yeah.
So you're saying the eighth, the week of the seventeenth?
I'm just, I'm just randomly throwing out a date, because I heard three weeks today too, that we need to get Rich to get this state building and everything, I, I understand it's only, there's no more ground wire thing, or unless somebody else, Ed, do you know anything? I think it's just the elevator inspection now.
But did you say you need the total of six weeks?
Man, I heard this morning, you said that they were supposed to be in here today, or that soon to do that.
The state inspector or the elevator company?
Well, he said, why are you grabbing, he said, oh, ground.
Oh, okay.
The elevator company?
Yeah.
But now, then it's just.
I didn't see them all today.
But then it's just an inspection and we're done.
From the state.
From the state. So maybe if we pick a date and start beating on people, that it's gotta be done by this day. So, somebody want?
I've been on Verizon for like three months, and it didn't really help.
Send somebody else.
We could.
Why don't we pick, why don't we start, why don't we, I would suggest that tonight we pick a date, and let's start moving towards a target.
Well, six weeks is, is January fourth, are you saying you need the total of six weeks to identify, to hunt out?
No, I mean, the Secretary of State wanted six weeks, but they usually, they just basically put an order into Verizon to go over there and set it up, and that, she said it usually only takes a couple weeks, but in my experience with Verizon, it could take six weeks, so, I mean, that's the key, I don't know what kind of impact that will have, I mean, I know they do need that set up right away, but we're not near an election time, so I don't know if that was delayed by a week, if that would be, you know.
Why don't we talk to tomorrow, because I know some people in Verizon, who have contacted before, and, and we did get an awful lot of movement, let's see if we can re-energize everybody.
What should we pick a date?
January fourth would be six weeks.
I was building.
Let's put fifteenth, we'd be safe.
I was building an extra cushion in there.
Do you want to invite?
January fifteenth, it's a Saturday.
No, I don't want to, I'm just picking, let's pick a date around there, that's.
Do you want to invite Peter Kokot at some point, or?
Well, I would assume we're gonna have a dedication ceremony at some point.
Yes.
That does, would not necessarily be while we're moving into it.
No, we can, that can be anytime, makes sense, I mean, I think we should probably talk to legislators and see what their schedules look like if you want them there, and talk to the architect and the committee, and find out when everybody.
But let's, let's pick a date, Ed, did you have something?
Just a call back question, I want to ask Rich, if you have more delay than what you anticipated, can you move in? This question for Rich, just the first one.
Yeah, temporary.
Right.
You got a temporary?
I don't know if you can do that with the operation, the elevator operation, I just a question in my mind, you know, this is all handicap accessibility on the first floor, and that's where most of your offices are.
And the only thing that's upstairs is us and.
It's a, it's our meeting room, and a cup.
Right.
And storage for the planning board, construction.
We're on the first floor as well.
Yeah, the movers are only planning, my understanding is to be here for one day, so they, we need the elevator to move, the items to the second floor unless we want them set.
Well, that's, my suggestion is we pick a date and send a letter out, that this is the day we're moving, let's get everything, it has to be done by this day.
And you want to move on Thursdays?
Well, I was suggesting that we have, you know, I didn't, I don't see how we can run operations while we're moving, so I suggested a day to move, and then a day to, to, you know, get everything settled, and then it would leave us Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so if people wanted to, they're not required to work on those days, but if they wanted to come in and get their office organized, they'd have the opportunity to do it, otherwise Monday, we're opening back up, and, you know, that's what we do.
Well, is there anything that's time-sensitive on the middle of January, such as tax bill?
That's the other thing we need to check on.
Tax bills or?
I have to check with Christie on the payroll or the warrant cycles and bills and stuff like that, absolutely.
Tax bills or?
Those are, you know, they're doing those every week, so we really have to, you know, there's like a very small window opportunity for us to unplug everything and move over.
So do we want to put this decision on a date one more week off? But I hate to do it.
Do you want to say a tentative date for targets?
Yeah, let's check on that date. It's a tentative date.
All right, then let's, let's pick a date that week and then that's, go to Christie and say, are you gonna have a problem on this day? And the same with all the, why don't we send a memo out to all the town offices that this is the anticipated move date? Is that conflict with anything you're doing?
Get a way to get something that people can react to as opposed to asking them to volunteer.
So January, but like January twelfth or eleventh?
Yeah, I don't have a calendar for that. It's twelfth, but it would say...
Twelve is a Wednesday.
Yes, so January twelfth.
So January twelfth.
Okay, Diane, I'll call you. I'll get a report on what's required in regard to Verizon and then I'll call the people, let them know there and see if we can get something about the...
Hey, and Doug, why don't you talk to Rich Alexek? I was gonna talk tonight, but...
Regarding?
That the only thing we need is the, the elevator inspection and we need a state inspector to do that. And we now have a tentative move date of January twelfth and we need it done by then?
So for the, the only three items that I feel like we are...
Point of concern for what, back about three months ago, there's major problem elevator inspections. There's like five vacancies in the upper building and then like two or three state rolling over inspections. Anticipated major delay, major delay, just letting you know that. I don't think they fill those positions with questions.
So then, Ed, back to your suggestion though, can we get a, a temporary or interim occupancy permit or certificate of occupancy just without the elevator?
That's, that's the question on my part. The only persons who would be affected would be on the second floor is the material going up there. Dave Kilson doesn't need, you know, handicap accessibility right off the bat, doesn't have here.
Right.
You know, and he's the only officer stuck there, so it might be something serious.
So even, he could even, if worse came to, worse comes to worse, maintain a temporary office on the first floor.
Yeah.
You could decommission the second floor.
You can add some, you know, niches in your, your schedule, you have to stand down. But, you know, I'm just throwing it out there as a fallback position in case you have to look at it.
Looks good.
It's good to know.
Good, thanks. I didn't, I actually, I didn't, Mr. Chair, do this.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I have that on, to finish my list.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I wanted to talk about it as part of the one, but, so moving costs five thousand. The other cost, everything else I think we can absorb, I mean, Joe, Joe Nissis put together a comprehensive list of custodial items that we need in the new building. And we have a list of cleaning supplies, cleaning equipment, but we are working with Norris School to see if we can, basically kind of find out what they're using and what works for them. And then also find out if they have things they're not using, but maybe we could use or we could share items. So we're gonna try to do that as opposed to buying items that we are not gonna use as often as we, you know, hopefully they can share. But the technology costs I'm concerned about. I think, I'd like to see us have five thousand dollars for technology because we have to move over our whole system and basically set it all up again. And we don't have, I, next week hopefully you'll award the I.T., the I.T. contract. And I think we can talk to our company about, you know, getting some kind of bulk rate instead of paying the hourly rate. But I still think it's gonna be extensive and if there's problems, you know, that, that only really is gonna pay for, you know, I don't know, twenty-five to thirty hours, I believe, because their rates are like over a hundred dollars or something. And then moving, or the acoustic panels, I just added that on there just so you know. That might be something we could take out of another fund. I was thinking maybe we could take out of paying money.
What are you talking, wait, I, what?
Oh, I have a little list. I'm sorry. I just, three items, so I can tell you. There was an email that went out. Did you get a copy of the email today about the acoustic panels or no? There's, I thought it was sent to the, from the V.R.C. and I thought it was like wrong.
I, well, my computer was down for a large part of the day.
Well, basically, the last couple meetings, have you been to a meeting, you've been to a meeting and then a meeting, correct? Our new meeting room in Larrabee?
I don't think so.
I think we were there one night and we went over there for the first night.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
There's been a couple meetings over there. The committees have meetings and the sound is just very, very challenged. There's a huge challenge.
Very acoustic, very echoey in there.
Yeah, because...
It's kind of like Spalletto's and everything.
Like the White House.
Yeah. If you have more than two people talking, like you almost can't hear. So we're definitely gonna have a problem with the recording. So Dan, the architect, had suggested we look and get acoustic panels. We could also get flooring, carpet or something, but, um, I just wanted to put it on there just so you know that's something that we have budgeted. But I think we could probably take that out of our Charter money because it really is for the tape recording. Like we're not gonna be able to take the meetings and you can't, you know, you can't hear what's going on, so, but I just wanted to... So that's all I'm asking for, is the moving costs and technology costs. So I, I would ask that I want it for ten thousand dollars.
About ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't use it, I mean, it will come back, but I have really no idea what technology's gonna be. And I have a little bit in my budget right now, but that's really for the whole year. So if we get over there and three months into it, something goes wrong, I, you know, I need to have some money for that.
Do we have to appropriate this out of free cash right now? That number's dwindling very, very, very quickly.
Quick. Jess, you had something?
Yeah, just on the south side of town, Ed, you might have seen this too, just over the bridge and after Brickyard Road on the right, there, there's a sign there, a plastic sign that says, "Palm Farms Supports Norris School." And it's, I don't know, it's probably four feet by three feet maybe, something like that, white. And a couple of things are, one is, I used to be curious about these big billboards on the turnpike because I thought it was a national, federal law that you could not advertise such, you could see them from an interstate road. It turns out that an individual town can grant the right to erect an advertising sign. And they get revenues for it too, but I'm not sure if we've done that. And the other thing, my other concern is to the extent that we want to maintain this idyllic little community, that this could be the start of something big such that all these signs start popping up and popping up. And once you let one in, it's not unlike, you know, the camel's foot under the tent or whatever those analogs are that we use.
I never used the camel's foot under the tent.
The nose of a camel.
The nose of a camel. Well, I get confused with my animal geography, but I sure didn't get confused about seeing that sign and wondering why we have it up there with sort of permission.
Well, we have a sign ordinance and it's enforceable by the building inspector and there seems to be somebody with knowledge here in the back of the room. Yes, Chief?
Okay, Inspector, was that Cumberland Farms this morning? Talked to the manager, told them that they had to take the sign down. Is there a ordinance against that?
Yes.
Good, the reason I bring it up is I'm aware of that action. I just wanted to get it under the general purview of understanding so that if a week or two, if it goes by and Cumberland has just ignored us, then we have at least some evidence here in this open meeting that I'm aware of it and aware of what we know. Thank you very much.
I don't understand the perk, why it was put there with this.
I don't know if it was a fundraiser or something, but I was also told that there was a donation to the school for that sign. I don't know, left it there, that they posted the bars, because that's, that's our property, that's, that's their property, that's, I think that's Milinsky property. And he might have involved, there was a fundraiser or something and I think the Norris School was beneficiary of the fundraiser. And I don't know if that was something, renovations that, or the manager's fault, but yeah, we did talk to him anyways.
So I guess we don't want, we're on the record, Ed, so to speak, do we want to discourage contributions to the school in exchange for signs or not?
Well, I'm a member of the master plan committee and the very clear references out of that Southampton twenty thirty was to maintain the idyllic country nature. And I think sign after sign, before you know it, you're like, I want you to say the name of the road in nearby city, sign after sign after sign.
One thing, just Rich also, you know, you can talk to him himself, but he did say, why didn't you put it in the school? You know, about that. I, I think it has to do with, it was involved fundraising and I don't know, I don't know location. Show more people.
Sure. Also, Mike, you might recall too, a few years ago, we wrote it down, having letting one newspaper come in and put one of those metal things outside the town hall here.
Oh, yeah.
For fear that it would suddenly erupt into ten or twelve junk newspapers with trash.
Mr. Chair, would you take a motion to put on the town warrant for us to appropriate not more than ten thousand dollars for computer services related services?
Well, why don't we go right into the discussion of town warrants and do it right there?
Okay.
We got, we got articles. By the time we're done, the question is whether we have any money. Did you put anticipated warrant articles in here for that or are you asking for...
I did not put them on this time. I wanted to, I did not put them on without asking.
And just to be, be clear, you, you, have you spent any of that twenty that's there?
Just on one item, yes, just a small one. I, yes.
Because I mean...
We're starting to spend it on furnishings and equipment. I mean, that's, that's what it's...
Who's, who's approving the list of furniture tonight?
Nothing's been purchased yet. The only thing we've purchased was something that was supposed to be part of the project, but they, they, we had, there was another fund that I thought would be left at the end of the project that won't be now. So we've taken the, like, the projector basically that we want to put in the meeting room to run the, if we have presentations and stuff, we bought, it was eight hundred dollars, we spent that. But I have nothing to purchase at this point because, you know, we have to prioritize. And until I know what, what you're gonna ask me to spend out of that, I, you know...
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, someone's gotta be, I mean, you'll be reviewing it, but I don't know what the intention is as far as if it was furniture and stuff that was supposed to get broken on the way over or got broken on the way over.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is that...
Hopefully with professional movers, they don't have any breaks.
Right. Our pri, our priority is, is organization. So our priority is filing cabinets and the storage that we need and the appropriate, you know, storage equipment, if you will, in the basement. Like we just basically have a big room and we don't want to amend what we have upstairs now. We want to have organization. So whether it's petitions or filing cabinets or some people have asked for a metal, you know, cage that can close and lock in one section. But again, it's hard to preempt that before we really get over there and level.
All right, so you're in suspicion to hold the twenty thousand until you're there?
Yes, basically. Well, I, I'm hoping, we, the file cabinets are a necessity, so I'm hoping the file cabinets will be there when we move. So that way people, when they bring, because like if you go in our office, you see we just have boxes everywhere. We'd like to get over there and be able to put those things in file cabinets.
What, are you gonna bid those items out?
Uh, we went with the state contract. W.B. Mason is on the state contract, so we got a furniture list from him.
But I mean, if you're going in the basement for storage in the basement, you can buy used ones.
Oh, yeah. No, no, we are gonna put all our, all the, you know, any ones that we can get anywhere in the basement for file cabinets. We have basements up in here, the file cabinets in the attic that we go over. But we might need some metal shelving for, you know, some of the books that I mean has in our office, things that can't go in filing cabinets. We're gonna need some kind of metal shelving. Some of that may be able to come from upstairs. But again, until we really start moving things around, it's hard to tell if it's gonna be able to go over, so, um... So that, so yeah, the objective was to wait until we, first of all, have a sense of if you, if we are gonna be required to use that money, you know, go further with other, you know, like, I don't know what... I mean, it was for furnishings, but I suppose if you wanted to amend that article to make it for moving too, I mean, you could do that. So that, that's why we haven't really, I'm waiting to see what it comes to.
What's your pleasure on the town, town meeting proposal warrant? Do you want to do it article by article? Or you want to talk about it in generalities initially or what do you want to do? What do you want, you want to deal with free cash issues?
I was trying to figure out which ones had free cash in the system. Is Article five for funding for the fifteen thousand dollars, is that free cash?
No, that's from C.P.A.
And then the article for the transfer funds, Article eight, which is eighty-five hundred dollars?
Yes, that's free cash.
That's for, for forty, obviously it's for millions.
Yes, six oh seven, our ambulance fund. And Article eleven is free cash, but that's just two hundred twenty cents.
And then Article twelve's to, to public. So I thought we went over all the articles last week and then you wasn't here, so...
Well, we didn't, we didn't put any money in Articles one, two, or three. Or no, well, one, one is the budget, right?
Right.
So two and three. So right now, you got, what did we start out with? Free cash, hundred seventy-six thousand?
Thirty minus twenty-nine for...
One seventy-six minus twenty-five for an officer?
It's one fifty, one five forty-three.
One fifty, okay. And we had one other article, the eighty-five hundred dollars for the, um...
Audit.
Audit, or, yeah, the energy audit.
So that gets us down to zero oh three, five zero five one five one four one three, one forty-three oh oh three, hundred forty-three thousand.
Is that with the police?
Two, two twenty-six, eighty-seven.
Uh, yes.
That's with the patrolman?
On big bills.
Twenty-five for the patrolman.
So we do need to construct two articles. One article has to state, like Article thirteen has to say, transfer ambulance funds to the police wages for funding of, probably not for the... And then the element has to say the free cash to go to funding of police wages. So those have to be Articles thirteen and fourteen or, or change, otherwise not.
I will, I can't remember which town was in the paper today about their, exactly what Ed brought us last week. When he said that he would be fifty thousand dollars short on his CNN salt. Some other town reported a similar thing today in the paper. I don't remember which town.
Yeah.
That, that it had gone up by a third, I think the same number that Ed had used. So, do we want to, why preempt that and transfer money for Ed? And that's not including his gas. Do we want to add fifty thousand dollars to his budget in anticipation of chemical needs, chemical costs?
To do that, it still leaves us ninety-three.
Well, I mean, I'm asking that question. Is that something you want to do? I mean...
Is it, please?
Here we, here we go with putting a patrolman on and, and everybody's gas budget's out of whack, so we, we're not out patrolling anymore.
I had that thought.
But yeah, I think we should include the fuel.
Budget something extra for fuel.
Do we have an approximate fuel?
Didn't Ed give something? I wasn't here for the last meeting and I apologize, I was on vacation. Can you give something for you, Ann, for what's unestimated additional cost to the Verizon prices, blah, blah, blah?
I'm here to ask if, based on what I anticipate's gonna happen, where the market's going.
Yep.
And the market's still up there. We, the first three or four months this year, we, we had a decent price, you know what I'm saying? But right now, the market's up there, I don't know, it's eighty-four, eighty-six thousand dollars per hour right now. And, um...
It was eighty-three last week.
Yeah, it's, it's, we'll have another four cents this week at the gas pump.
Pretty good.
I have, I was, I was short about ten thousand dollars going into this year on fuel. And it was in the finance business, allocated ten thousand for that dome shortage, so that part of it was done. But I did not budget, uh, or any other department even state for the anticipated increase in fuel. We were gonna, the fuel pool, as we always bet, on how we use our fuel now. But I would say we're looking at another, anywhere from seven to ten thousand dollars.
For your department or for?
For, for fuel, for gas and diesel.
For everybody.
Fifty plus ten.
And then what was there, a raise in, from what I understand, salt?
Salt, about thirty-four percent.
We did say last time, fifty thousand for salt.
So do we put anything in this budget?
Just to talk about this item, uh, there hasn't been a year since I've been here, you can go back to, that we haven't had enough to sit in the roads. It's not the matter that we don't have enough money here. You've never had enough money.
Right.
I don't know if any year would ever turn back money, or we've had years where we didn't spend as much as we thought we would with the deficit. Right now, we're in a mild period. We have it in snow, we usually bad snow, we usually create bad snow. That's a good point. For a normal year, I'd say we're gonna, we need an additional fifty thousand dollars for that. A normal year is probably about twenty-six, twenty-seven, times one out, three thousand of all, probably following ten to twelve times.
What was your deficit last year?
The only number was probably about forty-five, fifty thousand.
Okay.
It was a mild year.
I mean, it is the only department that can run a deficit in, correct?
But, but the fallacy of that, David, isn't that we, comes right off the top, first thing next year?
Yeah. Well, here.
So, coming back.
But haven't you, when, for years past, tried to balance the budget even here?
That's right, yeah. We haven't, we haven't, since I've been here, we haven't taken it off free cash funders, but we've, we've used, but in a sense, it doesn't, I mean, it comes out of our under expended monies that we go through cash, but we balanced it before we did.
So the question is, do you want to put the money in there now or hold on to it and in case something else comes up and then just figure it out and end it?
Well, you've got, if you took all of those items out, did I do the math correctly? You've got, if you take out the fifty for salt and ten for gas or fuel, you've got eighty-three thousand dollars left.
Yep, that's right.
I think that, and speaking, and maybe Ann can elaborate too, but speaking of John Fitzpatrick, certainly the commitment of the school is that they are intending to have money left so that they, you know, that they're, they understand the school choice, the additional school choice out students at Norris and have agreed to, to basically, you know, have money available for us to have.
But that would be at the end of the, next year's free cash.
Could be.
So it's certified as free cash?
Huh?
But if it was, if it was left in the appropriation at the end of the year, we do our end of year transfers, we could use that to cover.
So it wouldn't offend free cash just yet?
No, it's not free cash yet. We can't, they can't give it back to us yet.
Well, we could reduce the appropriation, but we, they, I haven't, they, they have to...
Right.
...have that discussion.
So, well, Article one's the one for the budget. Does anybody have a problem with Article one? And that was the budget that you constructed the last time?
Well, the budget, I mean, I think really it's about Article twelve because I have two different versions of the budget that, that one definitely, you know, shows Article twelve incorporating and none does not. So all the other articles are gonna be separate articles that won't be incorporated to the operating budget. But I did incorporate Article twelve just because we have to get the money into the salary lines, so...
All right, so the first question becomes, are you, well, let's do this before we, I agree with you there, are we gonna do the energy audit?
I'm in favor of that, for sure.
Article eight.
We could save quite a lot in the possibility of paying for some of that lender's maintenance.
So, we're moving motion to submit Article Eight as.
I move that we submit Article Eight as written.
All in favor?
All right.
And let, Art, let's go back and do eight Article, let's do the easy ones out of the way, Article Five, the CPA.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, right. And Article Six, ambulance fund?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Article Seven, ambulance fund, buy purchase a new ambulance?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, I think.
Yeah, I have some concerns about that, I understand that there is a replacement period, a replacement time for ambulances, we have one that's nine years old, one that's two years old, is my understanding from last week. This would be from the capital improvement account, right Diana?
No, it's, it's on the capital plan, it's already been approved by the capital, the capital committee, but we didn't have the, enough money, and the ambulance fund at town meeting can fund it, which has been, we usually fund it in the fall once we, we have, we've generated the whole year's worth of money to fund it, so.
So when would be the, sure. So when would we need to buy another ambulance, given the usage and the utilization and the rates in recent years?
Well, it was scheduled for replacement in July, but we, as I said, we didn't have enough.
No, 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 that's not my question, my question is, when do we need to buy another ambulance?
The next one.
After this?
Ed, we do that, we've been traditionally doing that nine years old, eight years old, this one we're replacing.
So we shouldn't need another ambulance for seven years?
Seven more years then, for another ambulance.
Yeah, once a, yeah.
Two years.
Then you got, two to seven years.
Mr. Chair, in regard to the ambulance here, it's one hundred seventy-five thousand. I'm, I'm for this, but I think we lost track of something. A couple of cycles ago, when we bought, uh, the fire pumper, whatever, duh duh duh.
Pumper truck.
The fire truck, yeah. We had said after that, there will be no more expenditures until we have another full-time person in that place. That was a mandate of us. Now, I can see doing this, but as far as I'm concerned, spend no more on any more equipment till we get another full-time guy in the firehouse.
What I did tell the board last week is now Monday, Friday, we do have full-time coverage in the fire station. Which I've done since that meeting.
Okay.
I have increased, so we do have coverage all day long on the Friday.
But is that somebody in addition to yourself?
Yes.
How many people?
There's two of us, myself and another person on every day.
Who's that other person, may I ask?
I have four people actually who take the, take shifts.
Okay, good, good, yeah.
So it's not one person, there's four people who are working all the shift.
And that's forty to fifty hours a week total?
Yes.
Okay, good.
So how's that worked out?
Sure, sure, like I told you last week, our response time has gone, on the average, when we were volunteer department, our average response time was ten minutes to a call. Now our response time going out the doors about a minute and a half.
Major improvement, I suppose.
Especially if you're in trouble with this.
True, is there any other respect to this article that we could append, amend, or otherwise modify, such that, you know, the, the fire department will not buy another ambulance for another seven years, unless this one gets destroyed in a bombing attack or something?
Terrorist attack.
Do we ju, do we just make ourselves aware that this was our mandate and our understanding? So, no more after this.
Does this go into our fiscal policies?
Well, I, I mean, I think we'd like to slow down the ambulance, because this, the ambulance we're replacing, if I recall, is it, has forty-eight thousand miles on it.
But it's not mileage, Michael.
No, no, and that's why.
It sits, it's worse than driving.
But these are diesels.
Right.
And, and if you're buying, paying ten thousand dollars extra to have a diesel engine in a vehicle that's really designed to go on.
Hundred thousand.
Hundred, or two hundred thousand miles, why are we paying extra money for a diesel if we don't get the benefit of the diesel?
I agree, so do you have the benefit of a diesel?
It's not just a whole package, it's the box and chassis. This particular truck here, I've spent a lot of money that happened past on the other ambulances for fine work. And, for whatever reason, whether it's something in the design, or however that vehicle is built, they eat up brakes and rotors on the front end of that. So it's, it's a whole vehicle, it's a, they're built, they're very heavy on chassis, so when they put these together, the use they get, it's not like they're conventional off-the-line trucks that are built to a national manufacturing spec. We use them as emergency vehicles, they're trucks, they go off the road, they're in all kinds of weather, they start right up, they don't sit there and idle before they go out, they're, they're going out hot all the time. So there's a lot of different wear and tear on the whole truck. And so the packages, you have the diesel, it's there for the durability, it's also there for the safety. They went away from gasoline engines, because there were a lot of ambulances that started, they started having ambulance fires, so the extension body that, that changes the ambulances went to the diesel, just for the safety reasons, not just for the durability of diesel, that's not really why it implies the reason.
Well, maybe what we should do is, we wanna slow down the ambulance replacement if we can, and use that money for personnel. Is that what the, the desire?
Exactly, right, just Doug has said, and we agreed on this a year ago, was that that was gonna be the mandate.
And I think.
Because of the mandate's been shot.
Command, they help, the ambulance fund specifically was to replace the ambulance, we've grown into supporting the ambulance now. But the original reason why they established the ambulance fund was to keep us in a good ambulance, without having those taxation.
You know, and the other thing, Chief, is I think when we talked about that the last time, and we asked you for that, that full-time person, we asked you for a plan. And I don't think any of us were aware that the plan had been implemented, at least I wasn't.
Right.
And I think perhaps what we'd like to see is some sort of plan from you, as to, you know, the program is in place, but maybe some.
He did, he did tell us.
What, he did?
He did.
And I think, I think it might have been one of his golden effective some of his contracts.
When I went to.
Well, I, I think it was.
I dragged all part of my contract.
Yeah, but I thought we were supposed to come back with a plan.
Well, he, he told us.
All right, if I stand corrected.
He wasn't a detail, it was four guys, it was split shift, but there was always a guy.
I mean, I know it was last time. I, I knew we talked about it last time, but.
Yeah, he said he had.
All right, the Articles there, any further discussion?
Thank you.
We got it first and the second, all in favor?
All right.
And I guess, I would suggest that perhaps you send a note, maybe to the capital management committee, that the next time an ambulance should get a capital fund in two thousand fifteen.
Yes.
That would be the policy part, just make sure it's on the grid.
Yeah, two thousand fifteen.
Right.
Two thousand fifteen.
Fifteen. Is that right, two thousand fifteen?
Eight plus seven, it'd be eight plus nine, it'd be seventeen, two thousand seventeen.
Wow, you know.
Yeah, you can't be far toward it, because if something happens, someone's truck.
Between two thousand fifteen and two thousand seventeen.
But they should plan that the next ambulance replacement will be twenty fifteen.
Well, we're doing twenty fifteen, you know, we're out to twenty fifteen already, so I'm just suggesting we get it on the plan for that year, and if it needed to be moved up, you know, or back.
My oversight is Article Nine goes with Article Eight.
Move to approve.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Article Eight.
Can we do Article Ten, does anybody have a problem with Ten? The electric rates?
And Mr., I'm, I'm, Elstein, from Manhattan, Chicago, will be out next Tuesday on the thirtieth. That's the other thing on your agenda, he's going to talk to you about if this resolution is adopted, what the next steps would be for municipal energy aggregation, or municipal electricity.
But we still get, this, we can always pass it over if we have a problem.
Yeah, but I want to get it on that, because.
Right.
I move to approve this, I think it's a good idea. Aggregating.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
So we are down.
Eleven, WB Mason.
WB Mason, free cash, two hundred twenty-two, two hundred and twenty-six dollars?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Remember, that requires a nine-tenths vote, because that's a.
Also, it doesn't appear on your sheet, but I did want to tell you that I had time to review the draft one, and Article Two, excuse me, Three and Four actually require a two-thirds vote. There's a new law that passed a couple of years ago that requires a two-thirds vote in and out of stabilization. So you have to have a two-third vote to go into stabilization too. So I will change that.
Have you talked to the moderator, is he aware of this?
Yeah, does he know the meeting's coming?
Yes, he does.
We actually did not notify him, but I'm sure, yeah, hopefully he does, I will, I'll send him a copy of the warrant tomorrow. I'm sorry, I did not.
Well, he didn't want to have it complete before we sent it to him.
Yeah, yeah, normally I do send them, what you've decided.
Right.
All right, so, and before we go on, we have a, we have an article that would transfer ten thousand dollars from the ambulance fund to the police, do we have that?
Yes, Article Thirteen, ambulance funds in the amount of ten thousand, to, I don't know what.
Ambulance fund to police wages.
Okay, I don't know whether we voted to put that on the warrant, is it, so?
Yeah, we did.
Did we vote that one? And did we vote the other one for the police officer? Okay, so then we're down to, um, well, you wanna tackle twenty, you wanna tackle, start at the back and work our way to the front, then, and do Article Twelve?
Could you also, I mean, I don't know if you wanna leave that to us, but I don't forget my money for moving and stuff that I just talked to you about.
Ten, ten and ten.
No, five, five.
Five and five. Five for move, five for.
I think it should be separate, so.
Five for moving.
So you can go shoot.
Yes.
So.
So moved.
Moving costs.
So that's coming out of free cash.
So it's on the.
So eighty, eh, well.
Now we're down to.
Well, let's, before, can I back up? Back up for a minute, what are we gonna do about the salt for, for, Mr. Colley? Are we gonna?
Probably do what we did earlier.
Or do you wanna pay for it upfront?
I'll hold off on the pay for it after it happens.
All right, what about the, what about the gas situation?
I would do the same, only because you don't know if there's something, some catastrophe, or something else.
All right, so that leaves us with one hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Coming back to Diana's Articles, do you wanna make a motion on the five thousand technology and the five thousand moving?
Yes, I do.
You did?
Yes.
Is there a second to the move, is it both Articles or?
Second, you wanna make it two separate Articles?
There are gonna be two separate Articles.
Yeah, so for now, Articles Thirteen and Fourteen, just for the cycle numbers.
Is there, so Article five thousand dollars for moving and five thousand dollars for technology moving?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. All in favor?
So I guess it's seventy-three.
No, we're not there anymore, because you dropped the fifty and the, you're back at one hundred and forty-three minus the ten.
Well, because we've taken the.
So it's seventy-three plus fifty then.
May I, may I ask something? What is your, what is your opinion on the fifty thousand, maybe ten thousand for gas or whatever? Should we include that now, or wait?
If you have a preference.
As far as gas is concerned, many years, we've taken out of the reserve, which was past thirty-five thousand, thirty-three thousand, and they did that by department, by department, or that's what we've been for. And that's reserves for after seeing costs. And currently, we don't know a lot of, I think that's an option. As far as fifty thousand, that could be a hundred and fifty thousand.
Which is why we should put, which is why, in my opinion, we put the fifty away.
Yeah.
Well, we just keep it, we won't spend it.
My, my suggestion is, it's my suggestion, put at least twenty-five to thirty thousand aside.
Yeah.
How?
Well, something's better than nothing, but I mean, we've been working away from being so far in the hole with, with winter roads when the year starts. I mean, when I first came on the board, it was, it was an astronomical number that was great.
I mean, there was one year about five years ago, my U.S., and I sat down, we had twenty-three thousand dollars left in salt pot for going into March, we used every bit of that money.
Yeah.
Every bit of that money, because the finance committee wanted to use that from the house. And we were going to break off.
We bought salt, and, and then you ended up having a storm in April or something, and we used all of it up.
So the numbers are right, if we, if I added back the ten and the fifty, that got us back to one thirty-three.
I was one forty-three, so I don't know why I'm wrong, but.
I had one forty-three to begin with, and I took sixty off and got one eighty-three, so eighty-three.
Yes.
Minus ten for Diana's to.
Oh, I, I had not taken ten for Diana's.
So then taking twenty-five off would leave us still with a hundred and eight.
Why don't we, you know, here's a suggestion, you got one thirty-three, why don't you take thirty-three off for, for salt?
Right, salt and gas, yeah, I believe you agree to that. I make a motion that we set aside thirty-three thousand for gas and increase fuel expenses.
Well, no, thirty-three is salt, not gas.
Sure, let's say salt.
So transfers thirty-three thousand from the free cash accounts to the winter roads account?
Yeah, should we take the second? It's all specified as.
Yeah, it's a general.
We'll be able to use the energies to go.
Right, but winter roads.
Winter roads.
Winter roads.
I'll second.
Thirty-three.
So it gives us down to an even.
Even hundred.
So there's a second on that, all in favor?
All right.
So that takes care of that, so we're, we're now at a hundred. Article, twelve.
Is that our last article to do?
No, we got, go back and do the first, do the first two.
Yeah, make a motion to approve Article Twelve.
Now, the twenty-eight thousand, is there a second, I'm sorry.
Diana, can you explain the different scenarios?
Well, there's only two now, I mean, there's just with the num, I, I don't know what Reggie put in the packet, I think she put, what I did is I basically did a budget that showed his representation of the numbers that he presented, so I balanced out to his numbers, the twenty-eight, four oh three, twenty-five, so, but I basically just put them in salary line.
Okay, so the choices that are between twenty-six, three eighty, and twenty-eight, four oh three.
No, 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 I don't know why the, no, I think. Yeah, twenty-six.
Twenty-six was, when I asked Pedro, did it, who did the calculation, they did fifty-two weeks, but it's actually fifty-two point two weeks, the way he counts it, so that's a good.
So the real number's twenty-eight, four oh three.
And I corrected it before, and then.
My question is, is this retroactive, is that twenty-eight thousand is retroactive?
The whole year, correct. So I, I really honestly am not sure how, you know, administratively that would be done, but I, but I just put it into the salary.
Would we be wiser to vote to, to fund it from here forward?
I expect a difference September.
Well, why not do it from, from?
I, I have something maybe to thought, and just to make it kind of even out. When the school gave the raise to their non-union people, should we do it from that point on?
Although, you're doing full year, still a measure of it, they, they gave it full year.
And I just do want to mention too, just it encouraged me that this doesn't have the fire department in it, there are fires that are on the wage plan, but because they don't work a set number of hours, we didn't have a calculation for that. And it doesn't obviously include, well, no, obviously, but it doesn't include the police side of it. And I know you have a separate thing going to that, but it doesn't include any, and it doesn't include additional quit mill money that would be salaries raised, quit mill money would be raised.
Which is why we still, you know, I would still maintain that it's, we should not grant raises.
So what do you say, we should do again?
I, I'm not in favor of granting raises, because you're in the middle of negotiations on other, on other fronts.
That was the reason I asked for executive session. Well, what if we split it?
Exactly what personnel is covered for twenty-eight thousand, four oh three, non-union?
Tom Hall.
And you have a list, a list attached.
Tom Hall.
It's not multiple ways and the.
It creates a problem with your negotiations.
Non-union versus the department heads, and take the department heads out of the, because Mr. Colley has a contract. The chief.
That's not true. Mr. Colley.
No, he's, he says salary.
Chief has, the fire chief does a contract.
Oh, oh, you got, but his contract is expired?
His contract is an expired.
But I'm just saying, if you take out the department heads and you just fund the, the non-union personnel at fourteen, seven, the only reason I say this is that I remember, and I know money's tight, but I remember what it was like when I was working at McDonald's, and I remember when it was like working in the mailroom as a computer operator, how much fifty cents meant as a raise. And when we had our budget done last year for our company, we only had so much money left over wages for raises. I didn't get a raise, I didn't get a bonus last year. But we had enough money to give the least paid employees a raise, where it's felt the most, where it means the most. And I think this is appropriate, the fourteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three cents, to give raises to those employees that really aren't making that much in the big picture. I think they will appreciate it more, that's as much as.
Why don't we leave this for last, and go into the executive session, can we do that?
I don't think you can. A non-union employee, you can't go into executive session?
Well, this is retracting, this is going to also reflect on the union employees that we are negotiating with. Well, that's my whole point, just to get shot down. Well, what's just fuck, you know, what's-
Well, no, we, we thought there's, that not, or I guess my interpretation, national law item two, is where it said you could negotiate with non-union personnel, um, but I guess what was clarified at the open meeting, uh, the meeting, was that you have to have a contract.
You're not negotiating.
So, so we can, you can negotiate with your non-union personnel with contracts, but you can't negotiate with your non-union personnel that don't have contracts. But you could go into executive session to talk about your union contracts under section three, that's what you're talking about.
I mean, fourteen thousand would be more to these people, and, and maybe you could say, argue that it's going to affect contract negotiations as much as you, we want to give in or not give in, and I think you have to separate the two out.
I think the question is, do we have the money to do it in these difficult times? And, and if we do do it, how jeopardy is it going to put to town if we do have a catastrophe?
Well, then, then you want to go back and consider the other two articles first and see what's, because you got a hundred thousand, if you fund it the way it's here, it's twenty-six thousand, you got seventy-five thousand dollars in free cash, we're back to the, the days when you and I first came on the board and no free cash and-
I know.
And we're operating in-
And then one year, we got thirty-five thousand dollars left over free cash and we held on to it.
Right.
I thought we were talking about a hundred thousand minus forty thousand.
Well, that's what we're saying.
So, so we're, we're, we're down to eighty-six thousand.
I'm very much in favor of this whole idea of granting some wages, my concern was and is that this will impact some other negotiations that we have ongoing, and where we, that I think is important to consider both, because I think if I were, you know, a union person, that money would mean just as much to me from a union person as if I'm a non-union person, you know, even though it's a small increase, it's still a morale building thing, I'm very much in favor of granting raises across the spectrum here.
And, and we, we've been thumping the table since a year ago, saying that we're not going to give raises, we're not going to give raises, what is-
Until.
Until. Until. Well, that, until that number is not very big.
But Mike, you said that-
We, we, we were looking at, if we had three hundred thousand, we could do something.
We would never have three hundred.
We had three hundred, we had two hundred and something.
But we actually never set a given amount, we said it when we were able, we never really said we had to have a certain amount before we could give raises. It's a very, it's a difficult, it's a predicament.
When you look at the, the recent contracts that we negotiated, the highway and the police, they weren't getting fifty cent raises.
They got them.
They were getting raises.
Yeah, but they get less than.
Right, that's the, the, what we're having to do.
I, I think you've got, in my position is that you shouldn't be talking about raises, because we've, we've made it a policy that it was no raises and you stick to your policy. And we don't have a lot of money here.
I don't want to misquote you, but you said that you would consider it.
Consider it, but I was considering that we would have more than a hundred thousand dollars. And you've not put anything in stabilization, which means your capital plan just went out the door, even if you put the money in, then your capital plan just shot rates-
Well, how much would you put in stabilization if we just used a hundred thousand?
I frankly would put on, you know, the, uh, fifty into the sta-, the capital stabilization and twenty-five into the other, and twenty-five is free cash.
And how is that going to help us if we have an issue?
We can take, we can take the two-thirds vote, we'll take it out if we have an issue, but it's not going to give you enough money to fund your capital plan, so your capital plan is, is dead in the water. So-
Well, it's sort of one's dead in the water or the other's dead in the water.
Well, capital plan's dead in the water no matter what.
No matter what happens.
Because we, we need a hundred and, how much?
We are trying to stay around a hundred and fifty annually, but this year, I mean, last year we had to defer some things, so, and we only have right now, I think, uh, under, I mean, fifty would bring us up, but then we would deplete it, we would go on some-
So, I mean, fifty would give you something to do with your capital plan, but your capital plan is going to fall apart completely if you don't put anything in.
Well, I mean, that's just where we're at.
Well, we're talking about capital plan versus personnel and morale, and they're two different principles, um, maybe because we've gotten ourselves into this situation in predicament with union raises and non-union not getting raises, we just put in a policy that we will in the future be diligent about funding our capital, um, our, our stabilization in our reserve accounts, and that, you know, at this point-
Then you're talking-
Do, do maybe the right thing in terms of addressing human needs, even though it is against our policy as, but we will recommit ourselves to policy, you can't always stick to the policy.
With one, one clarification, the union got raises. It's in the contract that that raises that you have to take for a hold. Am I right, Ed?
Yes, you took for a hold.
And highway, the other union.
Highway, so what I'm saying is-
The current contract that you negotiated?
I, I know what you're talking about, the policeman's contract is different, but the highway, when we're talking, oh, when that raises, I think that's a misstatement, because when you look at someone's retirements and future earnings, the highway did get raises, because of the contract, we, remember, we asked them to open the contract.
But that was negotiated two years ago.
I know, and, and times change, that's why we want to get the contracts, like tied together, so where economic flow goes with-
But speaking to Ann, the issue about, we recommit ourselves to the capital plan, you, unless you're going to do layoffs, you're never going to get, you're never going to get committed to your capital plan, you fund these raises this year, then you're going to probably look at layoffs next year, you're going to commit yourself to, because you, you're increasing your wage line faster than your tax rate allows you to go, and it's been done so many times in the past, we now have to put the brakes on it and let the revenues catch up to what we're paying out.
I support what Ann is saying, though, you know, paying this now and in the future, when that time arrives, saying, okay, this is, we recommit to that policy, I'm very much in support of that.
And also go out for, um-
For an override or some source of, you know, we can start selling advertising space, whatever you can do, and, you know, that sounds a little flip, I don't mean that at all, I mean, look at ways to structurally change regionalization, what can we regionalize? And I know I've been harping on that for some time, and I'll continue to do that, because I truly do believe that there are some economies of scale that can be achieved in these small towns and hills, and I think that we need to do things, and I think also we have this immediate, it's not a stopgap measure, but it's a measure of improving morale, so I'm very much in favor of approving this wage increase.
And let's, there's been several suggestions, let's, let's break them down. There's a suggestion to fund it retroactively, which is the twenty-six thousand, three oh eight.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight.
That's for including the department heads.
Including?
It's a question about, and I, I don't know-
I'm going to lay out some alter-, I was going to suggest we lay out alternatives.
Okay.
So the one thing is you just fund the twenty-eight thousand, retroactive raises and everything.
Um, yeah, and I, I guess I would ask that we increase that funding, like fifteen hundred or two thousand or?
For fire burn.
Yeah, I mean, we have a segment of the population that's in the wage plan that wasn't addressed on the sheet.
I would say two thousand dollars.
So call it thirty. Call it thirty, so you're going to-
Call it thirty.
One up-
Reduce it or increase it?
Increase it. Increase it to thirty. So one plan is to vote retroactive raises, non, non-union employees, thirty thousand dollars from free cash.
Now, remember, Mike, this town has to vote on this.
Yeah.
The town has to vote.
Second alternative would be to fund retroactive raises except for town department heads.
Right, so you take that other two thousand, so it would be sixteen, seven, not fourteen.
And the alternative to that is to fund the raises from here forward and not make them retroactive, so that would be seven thousand, or eight thousand. Eighty-three hundred.
Okay, if we do any of those three, whichever one we do, we chose to do one of them, is going to have a direct effect on our negotiations with the police department, period.
Well, we've got a tentative agreement with them, we've got an answer.
And possibly your other contract.
But again, Mike, you know, they can ask us on the negotiations, and you say that, you know, that's-
But our history is not to say no.
I know, but our history has changed to some degree.
Our history, you're sitting here saying yes when you said no. But anyway, that's where we are. Does anybody have, want to, want to tackle the-
Sir, the middle one that you said was-
Well, I, I, the, the alternatives that I've heard expressed here tonight, one is all.
Right.
One is no department heads.
And lay out on this first page.
One is no department heads, and my suggestion was, if you're going to do it, don't do it retroactive.
Right. I, I support the no department heads, sorry, department heads, but, um, I think, you know, given the situation here, this is kind of the rank and file, if you will, I'm very much in support of that.
So no, 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 no department heads, but rank and file retroactive.
I would support.
So somebody's got to start making some motions.
I'd make a motion to fund the non-union ra-, uh, wage increase retroactively back to the beginning of the fiscal year, um, for a total of sixteen thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Second, that's without the department.
Right, that's just the, yeah, without the department.
That's the one without the department, yes. Alright, there's a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
I would like to see, as the plan, who was discussing?
That would cost sixteen?
I would say table.
Sixteen something?
Yeah, sixteen seven.
Seventeen thousand. Call it seventeen for the numbers.
I'll take discussion, Mark.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you well enough.
I'm interested in having everyone that's listed here as part of this package, and I think the-
Including department heads.
Yes, because I don't think the difference is in-
Yeah, I, I-
It doesn't make much difference in our efficiency and savings, and why differentiate? Everybody's hardworking.
If we were to include in department heads, because I think that's unfair, what would be the added cost to that sixteen thousand something?
Fourteen, fourteen thousand dollars.
That's a specific, Paul, Joe.
The department heads cost you almost as much as everybody else does.
What would we do without our department heads?
You won me over, Ann. Okay, I-
Alright, wait a minute, we, we-
I understand to my second.
I withdrew my motion.
I withdraw my second.
Alright, so now, somebody start all over here.
Dan, go right ahead.
I'd like to move that we, um, support the entire roster here that includes department heads and non-department heads for retroactive raises, total of thirty thousand, that also includes the two thousand for the fire department.
Two five, click, yes, sir.
Okay, motion's made.
Second.
For thirty, to fund retroactive raises for all non-union employees. Right, is that correct, or?
All non-union.
Okay, there's a first and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll vote no. And now you go back to your first, not your first two, your second and third.
So it leaves us with seventy odd thousand.
Seventy odd thousand.
If my numbers are right.
That's what I have. So, free cash into the stabilization account, Article three.
So seventy thousand left?
Seventy thousand left.
We have, realistically, how much do we have to put in to do the projects we want to do?
Over a hundred thousand dollars.
What else do we have to have the money for right now? What's left? Besides that? Hold on to it?
Well, you got the stabilization account that you and I got enacted, that we dumped ten thousand dollars in, which still has some measly ten thousand dollars in, and it's never had any more money put in it. I suggest that you come up with some formula, at least to discipline yourself to put something in each of those accounts.
You put a, a third, I mean, well, save, save fifty thousand, and put ten in each, for now, and then, I don't know, maybe the money will be needed.
What about putting thirty and twenty and then shake the balance in free cash?
I can go for that.
You know, it's actually, you're fine.
So thirty into the capital stabilization account, the recent, is that what we call it?
It's called restricted.
Restricted stabilization, thirty into that, is there a motion?
Someone?
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then into the all-purpose stabilization, is there a motion there?
So we have forty thousand left in free cash.
Right, yep.
Ten thousand, you want to put, keep thirty out.
You got thirty-four in your reserve account that we need to go to.
And you can, if you needed this money, you can use it for anything as long as you can get it out.
Two thirds, take a two-thirds town meeting vote to get it out.
There's ten in there now.
Yeah, that ten's been there for two years without it.
It's doubled, no, how?
I was, this being, this is the account you may need to use at some point in time, it, almost like a rainy day account.
Would you like to see twenty?
I'd, I'd like to see twenty going in.
Second.
All in favor? Any further discussion? All in favor?
That was us with the grand total.
Nothing.
No, no, we got some, ten, ten.
Ten.
Ten thousand.
Ten, ten thousand in free cash, which is nothing.
Living on the edge, Michael, it's like the sixties.
We actually put stuff in the stabilization.
Alright, um, so, so now we need to schedule, this, tonight was supposed to be the sign.
Right, well, actually, you, you voted on all the articles.
You can sign the second page, right?
Yeah, I have a separate signature page, so what I'd like you to do is, one, sign that, and what I will do is I'll make the adjustments to the budget pages and to all of the articles, I'll send them out first thing in the morning, and please review them for you with, and then, as long as everything's okay, especially my, you know, my, the chair, come back to me, and then, um, we can have it posted, you know, Monday.
Okay. Alright, um, do we take open time for the public?
I have two things to comment on. Go ahead, Mr. Colley, your problem.
First thing, um, just update you on the parking lot, um, I forgot to tell you last week that the upper's parking lot, we just finished building it, we have a lot, I would like to make one way going off Maple Street, that will take a lot of congestion, of that traffic coming out of it after meeting interfere with the parking lot.
Going from Maple Street?
The lower parking lot, yeah, they'll come out on Maple Street.
Come out onto.
Just the upper two parking lots, there's, there's forty cars involved in those. What that does is that, if there's a, an issue down below the parking lot to get trucks in and out, at least that won't interfere with it.
Smart, that's great.
Coming in, and that will relieve some of the pressure.
Right.
But the lower parking lot, where the parking lot can use it now, we're going to finish building next year, that traffic will be two ways, if you go out the other way, it's issues too, but that will be two ways. And the fourth parking lot, that was built for buses years ago, uh, when we finish that, that will still go out there for parking lot, that adds an additional piece of cost. I figure that would come in very handy for voting, parking lot, and you have big activities there, but that's not my area to do until we finish the lower parking lot. And for all intents and purposes, that parking lot's been built, always a good service.
I, I walked it tonight, it looks great.
It's gorgeous.
Yeah, great job over there, it's really, really good.
We have some more work to do. Uh, one of the new high res that we had, the highway park this year, actually is a pretty good street climber, and he's certified, and he's going through all those trees on the property, uh, and cleaning them up, and just come up if they would have done, and left it, and went out of it, and it's made a big difference.
Great, good work, man.
Can I ask you a question? First of all, I want to tell you, the town on drive, gorgeous, gorgeous, really good job. Um, somebody, when I was up there, actually, somebody asked me about barrels, are you going to put barrels back, or did you take those out to the windmill?
No, I'm not. We do have two more-
That's really handy, and you have the dog weasing, that is so cool.
Uh, I wouldn't vote in the town hall, but I would encourage you. But I do have two barrels, like the ones up there, that we're going to put, uh, to entrances, uh, to the new entrance down there, it's all over ours. Uh, and the last thing is, this is, uh, policy procedure thing, I was here a couple months ago talking about training and sexual harassment policy, I did talk to Diana, uh, I'd like to know if when we have that scheduled, and if we do schedule that, I'd like to assume, I'd like to have one class at least during the day, if I wanted to, if what they're making, I don't know, I don't know what we do. The second part of that question I asked, like even the last time, we had put two, four thousand dollars, do that other policy, um, I'm still looking for the ways to bypass spending any kind of money, and, you know, if you have any ideas, um, or suggestions, leaving to me, but I do think that alcohol policy and drug policy in the workplace is necessary, either we update it or work with our, get something similar, we need to update that both, and are over ten, twelve people, and they should be shot on annual basis. So I am working on that, if you have a suggestion, let me know, but I would like to know when you can schedule that other meeting.
We talked to Kat Kanter, and she, um, we get two free trainings a year from town council, so they'd be happy to come and do that, um, what we just thought about was, and I talked to Kat too, about having a session during the day and in the evening, they would just have, you know, the person would come in the late afternoon and then stay for the evening, but we were trying to coordinate it with our all-board meetings, so that we have one at a time, these folks have to come into the boards and committees, so, um, because sexual harassment is for all of-
So when's our January all-board?
So we had to push that off, so we had a schedule, well, we originally talked about having it December fourteenth, then we scheduled a special, so now, um, I mean, now we have to look at moving, because now we just sort of schedule that for the same week, but-
So let's pick February.
Yeah, we can do it the first, um-
Is that too far off?
February, or?
Well, sort of, I mean, that's what it is, it's what it is.
So let's pick a date in February.
Well, we'll do the first day.
Oh, and I think it's a great idea to have it on night when we have all boards in here and that's the, that's the meeting.
Yeah, but we'll also, we'll also have one in the afternoon.
Yeah, you guys have.
Like two before, so-
Right.
I can come, I can come there as well, too.
Hey, Ed, Ed, can I ask you a question, sir?
Yes, sir.
Where are you putting the flagpole for the new town hall?
Go ahead.
Do you think that you put it towards the island and the new apartment in the back to sort of draw people's attention, that that's the entrance and not the front?
Um-
If the flagpole was back there, sort of-
There, there was one option, put it- There, there was one option, you put it on the new concrete patio or entrance, but I just felt it was going to get damaged there by a pile or something.
But you know how you built that burn with the wooden, uh, barriers?
Yes.
You put it there, some sort of small garden, and when you came down on the corner, you'd see the flag in the back.
So you could see it from the street?
So you could see it from the street, say, maybe that's the entrance.
We, up by, uh, that island.
The island that you created?
The middle island.
Yeah, between the two islands.
That's a possibility.
It's a problem.
The other thing is that we have our post offices downstairs and then basically over there, so at some point, we talked to the postmaster about having it sited, um, one of the other, getting it, and have you guys are done figuring out where it needs to go. Maybe there's certain requirements, um, on the postal service with their ass spaces.
Yeah, um...
I mean, we don't need to, we could probably just do it this way, but I just...
I would prefer, I'm trying to button that up, but, um, I'd like to, I'll do that just for, because we got to do the front of the building, we still got a wall, and we did the back, and the front, we got to still bring some dirt, some more dirt, gravel, and bring that, that, uh, mom, let's smooth it out more, because it's still got, you know, pretty official, but we plan to bring it out. Thank you.
I'll work on it, thank you.
Shall we have executive session?
Anyone who's scheduled?
I got something appropriate, time of the public upon that, you may. Thank you so much.
Please, sir.
Yeah, you're concerned, no. Uh, first of all, uh, on behalf of the board of selectmen and the, uh, people of Thomas South Hampton, thank you, Jess, for being chairman, we appreciate it very, very much. And, and, uh, Mr. Filon, thank you very much for taking chair. I choose not to take the courage, so I appreciate it very much for you, and, and a happy Thanksgiving to all.
To all.
And to all.
To all, good night.
Thank you.
Good luck, Michael.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Are you accepting any motions or do you feel that, are you accepting any motions?
I'm playing through the motions.
Don't say it.